Okay, welcome everybody to our regular meeting for the City Council of the City of Perry. Let's go ahead and call our meeting to order and have roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
Lots of.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Calderon.
Here.
Rob. Williams.
Here.
Pochette.
Here.
Worthy.
Here? All right, we've got Quorum. And tonight, I'll go ahead and offer the invocation. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be here tonight to serve in this capacity as council members. To serve our city and our community. Father, we ask that you bless us in our stewardship, that we can do so with discernment and work for those that we serve. Father, we're grateful for your Son, Jesus Christ, for his example and his sacrifice for us. And we're grateful for those that serve in our community, the volunteers, the employees, and everyone that contributes to the things that we're striving to do. And Father, we pray for these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's begin with item number one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
So good. Okay, it's a roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Lots of.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Pochette?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Okay, item four, I don't believe we have anybody here to speak in front of the City Council. So let's move on to item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. So with this, we will start with word one. Shane.
I just want to say that the Main Street banquet that they had Tuesday night was amazing. Of course, they always do an amazing job with everything that they do, but it was a really good time. And congratulations to them for winning the, what was it? The Main Street. Yeah, Program of the Year?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. Austin?
Don't have anything.
Joe?
The only thing I was going to bring up is, you know, council have worked real hard on a strategic plan. And that process was great, and we had several things that came out of that process. And as I've grown in knowledge about that process, I think we got the cart before the horse. And we should have had a, we need to come back and revisit that process and come up with a comprehensive plan. So I'd like for council to think about coming back together and going through that again, to come up with that process. That's all I have for that.
All right, thank Joe. So kind of going off of that, is there a time that everybody's kind of thinking, do we want to do it maybe before the end of the year? And as we get into November and December, it gets kind of crazy with the holidays and schedules and things like that. Something to think about.
Yeah.
So it's.
I'd like to just finish what we started.
Right. Maybe by our next meeting, let's kind of take a look at your schedules and let's see if maybe we can squeeze something in before the end of the year. If not, then we'll take a look at right after the first of the year. Joe? Danette?
No, just reiterating the whole Main Street banquet was really, really awesome. And my Halloween show is on the side of the house now, so. You can go by and see a movie. It's dark before I get home, Brad's supposed to start it, so.
Brad, did you hear?
No, I don't have anything.
Awesome. All right, Sammy?
I don't have anything.
Derek?
One thing I'd ask about is the softball fields and the drainage that I previously had missed.
Sorry, softball fields, we talked about last time, which I think you were gone, which makes sense. We've talked with Commissioner Hughes, and he's in the process of getting millings. And we'll mill that block and then re-put the old barricades down so that parking is natural and understandable. And that's the plan for softball fields. In terms of the drainage, Critter went out and looked at it. It's something we've actually looked at before, and we're not super worried about it. But the worries we do have will be addressed with the sidewalk updates because it's onlookers.
Even, I mean, what I'm hearing is it doesn't handle enough. Yeah, so. They weigh, how much it handles and.
Yeah, Critter, so he's gone out there and looked at it. And he said the only time he was concerned is when we had that, the super heavy rain two months ago. And I think pretty much everywhere in town was struggling during that. So we've evaluated it, and there's not a major concern. The pipes have concave a little bit, and so they'll open up a little bit with the replacement on the sidewalk project, which will help with capacity.
Back on the softball fields, did we address the first responder path in those talks as well?
No, really, the path has been, from what I understand, the path in the past worked. But people are blocking that now because the parking is scopolous and people just go wherever they want. When we put down the barricades, it should return to that old path.
So that we'll have a blockade of some sort to keep people from getting all the way to the fence?
No, not a blockade, but people will park where, in the designated zone, leaving the first responders a path to go through because there won't be parking in that path.
I have something else too when you're done.
So the thought process is to pretty much return it to how it was, but now it's graded, drainage works better, and then the millings will make it smoother and look better.
Did you have anything else? Talk about parking and softball fields. The football field on Friday night, people are parking on the side of the highway, which they're not, in the grass, which they're not supposed to do. I don't know what we need to do to keep that from happening because there was one car when we left that, I mean, its tire was actually on the road instead of, you know, an all the way off, which it should have been there anyway, but somebody's going to get hit or something. It's just.
I'd have the guys check that on Friday nights.
Yeah, because I mean, since we don't have the lions parking people anymore, they just park wherever. I don't know if that's just something people need to be aware of, that they're not supposed to park in the grassy area on the side of the highway. Sorry. Just tapping to think about that when you talk about parking lot.
No, thanks for bringing both those out. They're both concerns that I've heard about from multiple council members and residents, and they're important things.
Well, thank you, everybody, for that. And just kind of reiterate how awesome the Main Street banquet was. I mean, it really was fantastic. And I had the opportunity to go to the Oklahoma Main Street banquet just prior to that down in Oklahoma City. And to get that recognition, to see all the work that Laura has done is just incredible. I mean, the amount of towns and communities that are looking at Perry now with everything that we're doing, we're really leading the charge in Oklahoma for economic development, just things happening on Main Street. And there was a number of other mayors, other Main Street directors that came up to me afterwards. And even, I mean, mentioned they're like, oh, you're the mayor of Perry, like, you guys are doing so many things. And people are noticing the things that we're doing, and it's exciting to see. So congratulations to Laura for that. It's a really big award and big recognition. And then the Main Street banquet that we had here, to have Lieutenant Governor Matt Pennell come out and speak and recognize Perry and all the things that we're doing is also huge kudos for us and everything happening. So fun stuff, good things happening. So thank you, everybody, for bringing that up. We do have a proclamation this month, and I'll go ahead and read that off. So whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is designated to support victims of domestic violence in their time of greatest need, whereas Oklahoma is consistently ranked as one of the states with the highest rates of domestic violence, whereas unhealthy relationships can have a lifelong negative impact on personal health and children's health, whereas we can break the cycle of domestic violence before it starts by equipping families with skills for healthy relationships, whereas parents, community leaders, civic organizations, and schools are an integral part of providing safe, healthy, and positive support system for survivors. And whereas assisting survivors is not just an investment in the future, it's an investment in Oklahoma for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Worthy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Perry, do hereby state that in order to recognize, honor, and support domestic violence survivors in Perry, Oklahoma, I hereby declare October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As a witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the City of Perry, Oklahoma to be affixed as sixth day of October 2025.
Yeah, I know that too.
Yeah, I'll type it over there, but that's okay. Again, this is just good things happening in Perry that we're making these kind of recognitions and striving to make our community safe. All right, so now we'll jump down to item number six. Our City Manager Report.
So two things I wanted to bring up. The first is to remind everybody about the Perry Planes and Cars event this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. DAP has been working really, really hard to make that event a success. And we're excited to see, you know, all the people that come out to that. So come out for food and for fun, bounce houses, a band, Red Dirt Rangers will be there. And we should have fly-ins from all over the state, so very exciting event.
Some people are excited about the lobster as well.
Yes.
That's like a big thing. The lobster main.
I've had several employees, yeah, like, I'm going for lobster.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be fun. The second thing I wanted to bring up is we are planning on doing a special meeting for the Historic Preservation Zone that we've been working on for a long time now, on November 17th at 5:00 p.m. It'll be a joint meeting with, just like we did last time, the Planning Commission, HP Committee, and Council all there, which is why we have to put it so far out, just quarterly schedules. So that is the plan, 5:00 p.m. at the event center. And we will be mailing out letters with the new map and the old map so people can see kind of the difference and the standard language that we have to put in those letters as well.
You say November 17th?
Yeah.
A regular City Council?
Yes, but it'll be at 5:00. Yeah, this will be at 5:00 p.m. We'll do it for 45 minutes before finishing up and heading out. That'll be kind of a time restraint.
Okay.
Those are the only two things I have unless anyone has any questions about either of those or any other projects.
There was some concerns about the transfer station having issues with people dropping off their debris that was closed or they were being turned away. Is that resolved or do you have that issue?
No, it's not resolved, an ongoing problem. What happens is the dumpsters get full very quickly, and then it takes Davis sanitation too long to bring out new dumpsters. It's a fine line to walk. I've talked to several of you about this in the past, but Davis is stretched pretty thin with our contract, and we don't have a whole lot of options in terms of running a transfer station. So there's not a whole lot that we can do in terms of holding them accountable without losing that contractor or paying substantially more. So it's something that, ever since I've been here, you know, people will call, I got turned away, and it's like, we're so sorry, you know? And I explain the situation, I get it, you know, it's unfortunate, but I don't know, I don't have a good solution.
Will you allow those people to come up to the location up north?
To the Tonka one? I could find out and ask, yeah, because.
Just because it's all loaded.
They could still bring their bill and.
And I think people, you know, speaking to that, I think people are probably willing to do it because like you said, it's like, it's not so much that it's inconvenient that they can't go right then. It's more like, well, all this stuff's loaded, I need my trailer tomorrow. Let me ask, it's a good question.
I know in the past, we used to, people called the City Hall, we've always told them that they can always take it up north to the dump. But I don't, nothing can you surveil that.
Well, let me call, I'll call Jim and talk to him. If nothing else, it'd be a good opportunity to bring the issue to the forefront of this, my address. Thanks for bringing that up, Joe.
Does it just, yeah, is it staffing or is it just, can we get more dumpsters?
It's both on his part, finding reliable staff and then just stretch then with dumpsters, bring them out.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Nate? All right, item number seven, our CFO remarks monthly invoice.
This month, which was September, not this month, but the previous month, September was actually a pretty easy month. We did our normal monthly work, no special projects, nothing big that we worked on this month. But we did answer questions from Jana's group, Jana, your independent auditor, who is coming tomorrow? Tomorrow, doing field work tomorrow for the fiscal year '25 audit, which is due to the state on December 31st. Hopefully, we can get field work done in a day. I feel like normally it takes about a day.
Usually took a whole day.
Yeah, an entire day, but she will try to get it wrapped up in one day so that she can ease the burden on city staff while they're answering questions and things like that. And I will continue to answer questions and hopefully we can get a report issued. At this point, it's all in her hands, so we have done on our side as much as we can to get her the information, so.
Thank you, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith? Thank you. All right, item number eight, Presentation of City Attorney Report.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a busy month, although I was out of the country for a third of it. You can see from the report that there's just a whole lot of economic development work there. Project Duke, of course, and we have had him on our agenda today, which kind of wraps up the final pieces of that before the closing. But there was a lot of work in order to come to this point and be prepared for closing. Now, point you heard at the last meeting, I think we did the site plan. Then we have learned from Matt Biswell that the building is 42 feet, .2 inches high, and in the zoning district, you're only allowed a height of 25 feet. So there's a variance that's going to be considered at a meeting on 9/16. I, of course, prepared that economic development lease agreement for the new.
You mean 10/16?
Yeah, it's 10/16.
Yeah, that's 10/16, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's not in reverse. Prepared the economic development lease agreement for the location, the possible business downtown. That's something I did. And then a lot of zoning and planning work, including the notice for the HP district and all the work involving the YMCA, the court case, and the agreement that we needed to do in order to close out that court case. This week, I'll be working on an additional economic development deal, contract that I need to get to Nate. Administratively, we had a meeting on the Perry Lake Dam. There's a couple of projects, small projects that we need to get finalized. I think we got really far in the last week on two of them. I had a meeting with Fancy Dance Casino, spoke to them. There was some FAA work and some work at the Perry Municipal Airport. And of course, the FAP financing that you approved at the last meeting. So those are just kind of the highlights. A lot of economic development work, and that's good. I mean, that shows that very direction, Mayor, that you were talking about.
Thank you, Bryce. Any questions for Bryce?
Can I talk about having dinner at the top of the Eiffel Tower? If you ever are in Paris, have dinner at the Jules Verne at the top of the Eiffel Tower. It's really quite superb. Anyway, it's definitely once in a while, I feel.
Let's take a recess, and it's on Bryce. All right, Bryce. Let's jump on to item number nine, our quarterly report presentation by Cherokee Strip Museum Director, Maddie Flores.
Well, good morning. I'm going to report over the last quarter, I am a reporter. Some basic statistics, we had 29 visitors, and of that, we had about 15 school groups and 305 of them was being parents and students. So a good start to our school year. And then we had about 54 of them being out of state visitors. And September is probably our busiest month for most of us in Perry. And we kind of had a new goal of doing quarterly outreach, so we were able to do quite a lot of that in September, which we had Fairgrounds, we went out there and participated in Fair Week and had a booth there. And then the Town Square, we were able to go up there at the celebration as well. So it's really nice to be able to spread out that weekend, be in multiple places. And it's just a really strong week for us since we are the Cherokee Strip Museum after all. So yeah, September was definitely a very, very busy time for all of us. And we did a townwide scavenger hunt, which was really fun. We hid stuff all around town at the parks, square, and then the kids could come in and get museum bucks for however many fun they got, so they got to spend their money in the gift store. So that was fun for them. And then we have the Tiny Top Review, and we did that out at the grounds this year. It's really fun, we did that arena, and it's just always a great time to see outfits, and they just put so much work and creativity into it. And I feel like that's just what makes us, our tradition so strong, is we just, you know, we do authentic things like that, and it's fun to see the week come together of the celebration. And then just moving on, we have a bit coming up this quarter, starting with, we have a couple, we'll actually have three Blacksmith demonstrations this year, first one being this Saturday. And of course, those are all free to the public, anybody can come to those. Let's see, we have a museum work day coming up, and if you have anybody who needs volunteer hours, send them our. We're going to just do some projects outside and work on some flower beds, and then there's going to be some opportunity to work on an exhibit too, which could be fun for people. Let's see, we've got our wagon and buggy show coming up. And just historically in the past, the museum's always done a rural heritage festival. And I know that's changed around throughout the years from being a May Day to just a family fest type of feel. But here, we want to do it in November, and just, we feel like that time of year is nice because it's kind of a break between holidays. And we'll have a live cowboy band, a chug again with a chili meal, lots of different wagons and buggies. Different people are coming together and bringing their neat things, and we'll have them on display. A petting zoo, we'll actually have a longhorn there that you can, kids can sit on. We'll have our so-house sessions, and then we'll have old-fashioned crafts and games. And this year, First Bank and Tractor Supply are our main sponsors, but we do have some working sponsors that aren't listed yet, but they will be. Let's see, so yes, that's going to be a really fun day, of course, that's also free. And then lastly, we have our Christmas tea. This year is December 7th, and it is in conjunction with the tour of homes. So we're going to have our hot tea and cider, and then we'll have just festive crafts, and we'll have live music for that as well. So it's exciting to be able to talk about pretty things already. Other than that, that's what I have for today, but if anybody has any questions.
Are you booked for our schools coming?
Oh, no, because we, this year, we opened it up to main Mondays. Yeah. And I know, again, in the past, we had been open Monday through Friday for the program on Rose Hill School. But for some reason, they stopped it up for several years, and we're, we just, we're, you know, we have a wait, unless why not? Let's open back up on Monday. So we did, and that was great. We've flipped most of our dates, but I'd say we probably still have around 10 to 15 days for the rest of the year that you can book, including those open Mondays, but we still have quite a bit more schools already this year than we last. So I'm glad we did open up that extra day for people to be a part of the program. So it's overall been a great thing, I'm really glad that we made that decision, so. Yes, thank you for asking that. Anything else?
The scavenger hunt was on.
Oh, I'm so glad you heard that.
It's so fun, our two-year-old got a blast.
Oh, is it, did he get to come?
He didn't want to give up his arrowheads and his.
You can still worry about.
I'll let my wife know.
Anything else? Well, thank you all. Well, thank you all, as always, and it's always a privilege that you guys are contributors, and we always appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Okay, item number 10, Presentation and Update by Ron Cardwell with MacArthur Associates on Seventh Street Sidewalk Project and Locust Street Improvements.
So I'll just do a quick intro, this is Ron Cardwell with MacArthur and Associates. He's part of the engineering firm that we chose for the sidewalk projects for Seventh Street and Locust. Done an awesome job so far, and they reached their 30% plans, so we wanted to have him come out and get some examples of what things are going to look like and get some feedback, particularly around the square, so.
How does this go up there?
He's on it, yeah.
He's got the magic going. All right, well, thank you very much, Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I myself sit on City Council in Piedmont, so I know what it's like to sit on that side, and I really enjoy, you know, doing civil engineering work and things that can benefit your community, and so I just wanted to roll through here and show you a little bit about the two sidewalk projects, which I'm sure you're probably mostly pretty familiar with, you know, on Locust Street and on Seventh. So the first project limits I'm going to go over is Locust, so you got the school, you know, on the left near 15th, and the route that we took, you know, was along the north side of Locust, and then we turned the corner and up to that Lutheran Church and School area there on Seventh Street. And so as I go through these projects or these hand sheets, it's going to start, you know, kind of on the left, and then we're going to kind of go down the street, you know, sheet by sheet, and take the corner up to the end. So starting down there, you know, near the school, so in this case, you know, north is going straight to the right-hand side, and the school's at the top of the page. We're going to, you know, move that crosswalk and put in a real, you know, ADA accessible crossing, move some signs around, and then replace those ramps, you know, on the corner, you know, the intersection of 15th and Locust.
And we have communicated that to the school, we talked to Russell Brand, he was out there with us, and we showed him, and he was.
Yeah, good, good. Then, you know, some houses there, right there on the corner, there are driveways and sidewalks, kind of, it's a little wonky, you know, not quite ADA compliant, so we're just going to do a removal and replacement of that, and then we have some good sidewalk, you know, heading, you know, further to the east.
Is it possible to widen that road any, because I mean, I know school pickup, people park along there, and it gets really narrow, so get them through there.
It's kind of outside the scope. Yeah, for a sidewalk project with ODOT, you know, that's out, you know, definitely outside the scope. We deal with a lot of on-street parking in Piedmont, and we really try to work with the school districts to say, hey, is there a way, can you expand your driveway to put more of the parking on your school grounds as opposed out there on the city streets?
As we looked at doing something similar on Seventh, we were wanting to change kind of parking structure of some of the churches, and basically it was like, no, no.
Yeah, yeah. Then we come up to 14th, where there's an apartment complex there on the north side, so we're going to get a crossing there, and since they already had on-street parking, we actually need to acquire about, you know, seven or eight feet of right-of-way beyond the property line to get that sidewalk in there. So I gave Nate, you know, a real good heads-on, and he's already had some discussions with that landowner, so things seem to be working out pretty smooth there. We probably may not be able to acquire the right-of-way until ODOT approves the NEPA application, but that'll be coming up in probably about six months. We'll have a new, so we're replacing some driveways, making them, you know, with ADA acceptable routes, so we don't have a lot of, you know, steep up and downs, so that the flat spot goes on in the new pedestrian ramps on every corner. A little, you know, just sort of the same. We do have existing curb, you can see where the line gets a little darker up there near about Station 23, you know, where it's 23 plus 00, then we have to put in some new curb and gutter along the street there, so we'll have the sidewalk right up against the back curb as it begins to go a little further to the east. You'll see that the sidewalk begins to deviate a little bit as it comes off to the edge of the page, and that's because we're getting in, you know, up to where that big vacant field is. And there's an, you know, so there's kind of a high point right there, you know, on the left, and we begin to have a, you know, just a roadside ditch line. We want to get the sidewalk on the backside of that so we can maintain that drainage and not incur the expense of putting in curb and gutter, and we'll keep, and then we keep kind of going down the road that way, but we have some power poles and some fire hydrants, so we got to kind of wiggle in between a little bit, and you can kind of see a little bit of the jog there on the right side. And just beyond that, then we get to a low point, and that low point has two culverts, you know, on the south side of the road, and we want to set a new box to kind of collect that there. It does appear that sometimes the water runs over the top of the road there in big storm events, so the outlet pipe will have additional capacity in excess of those two pipes so that it'll be able to, should be able to catch the water coming over the road, put it in the pipe, and then continue down the historical, you know, drainage path. We have another little drainage pipe to pick up the roadside ditch line, you know, just the runoff, you know, from the pavement there, coming in there. Putting that, putting inlet, you know, with a curb and gutter just set back off the street a little bit, it's kind of a, there's not too many places where we could put it. I would rather put it up closer to the sidewalk so I don't have to have that extra pipe, but because the pipes are running at an angle, if I set it back too far, then they just run into each other, you know, so I have to kind of be at the right distance to have enough separation between the pipes so that inlet will fit those existing pipes. From there, we're still going down the roadway, off the pavement, you know, a few feet inside the right-of-way line, and we'll have some pedestrian ramps again down there at the next We'll mark all the crosswalks as well as we go down through there. And then we kind of go to the corner where we're going to put in, you know, new crosswalks, for each direction, and then begin to turn and go north up towards the school. And in this case, you can see there is the existing curb and gutter there. Property line is way, you know, further, you know, back, we're several feet off property line right now, and you can kind of see a little bit, it'll show you the existing sidewalk. I probably can't reach that, but the existing sidewalk is just about in line with where the four is in 49. So our new sidewalk's going to be a little closer to the road, but there's a very large, you know, grassy area in there, and so we're kind of putting it in a new location, and the old sidewalk will be removed. Now we're getting down to Business District and down around Seventh Street. Seventh Street is bottom line, so north is to the right. You can kind of see the bank, bank building in the lower left-hand corner. First Street otherwise, you know, US 64 is the other sidewalk being replaced heading towards the high school up there, and it goes for about three more blocks up to the north up to Ivan. So this one's, you know, we got some more challenges involved with this, it's a wider sidewalk, it's very, very steep in some areas, so there's a little bit of a picture, that's what we, you know, had in our LiDAR when we did the survey, and it gets colored in with some of the photographs, you know, get combined with the LiDAR image. And what mainly what we're going to, you know, be doing here is, there is a handicap exit at the corner, but there's not really a ramp for them, they have to kind of go over and use the actual crosswalk, which is a little, you don't really want them maneuvering, you know, out, you know, over to a crosswalk area, you know, when you have a handicap space, you want the ramp right there in that crosshatch area. So the accessible route is really the darker gray area, so it takes you all the way up to the bank, and then the accessible route will be predominantly right along the storefront on a five-to-six-foot wide path total. The cross slope between that route and the curb can be in excess of 2%, if necessary, we probably won't be more than 5%, though. Some of the elevation grades, since we're just at 30, you know, 30%, you know, we haven't pinned down the elevation, you know, grades in them, but we propose along the, along that bank building to do kind of similar to what's been done on some of these other buildings, is build a taller curb up against the building, and then that sidewalk can come further down on the curb, because like the bank has that ephesus exterior, and it stops pretty much right at the edge of the sidewalk, you know, where it is right now. So if we cast a little six-inch-high, you know, curb height, you know, barrier curb right next to the building, then we can lower that sidewalk a little further down, and then we can have a flatter slope between there and the top of curb.
Would the material used there be the same type of material that they have for the bank side now?
No, no, we'll be, it'll be smooth concrete, it'll match a lot of what you have already in your Business District down here. One question that I want to, you know, address with this, do you still want to have, you know, those brick pavers on the backside of the curb for that, was it 18 inches or maybe two feet? You know, so we'll be, you know, we'll, we can carry that so you have some continuity from that area over to the bank area. And then at the I-Care building, we've added an additional pedestrian ramp, and that one's, you know, there's roughly 18 inches, 18 inches of elevation difference between, you know, between this gutter elevation and the finished floor of the building. There's quite a bit of elevation change there, so that poses some challenges, you know, we'll have something real similar, we'll develop our ramps to get up to it, it'll probably have some hand railing, and then it'll have steps as well, you know, for the, so people that can walk right up in there can walk up in there.
Will that take away any number of parking spots, or is that?
You may end up losing one, we'll re-scribe everything. You know, a lot of times, the way that they're, the way that they're striped right now, they're probably a little larger, not exactly right, so when you get down and you really, you know, line out everything really accurately, you probably, you know, effectively won't lose any more than what you already have.
So, Ron, let me interrupt real quick and just open it up, because this is, this to me is the most important slide to get feedback on, because it's your downtown, right? This is right in front of the bank, and we will approach, I think I've already talked to Shelby and said, hey, you know, we'll give you renderings and make sure that you guys understand what we're going to put in and are behind it, but if there's any concerns from the council about this, now's the time to bring it up, or any questions to understand it better.
You mentioned that while we communicate with at least the medical professionals too that are.
Yeah, we'll do all those businesses right there.
I'm more concerned with the I-Care and the Family Nutrition Center.
Does it have another entrance other than that entrance right there?
No, the main one, no. Their employees use the back one, but their main one's just that one on the corner.
We may have to, you know, unless there's a specific holiday that they're closed, a weekday, we may have to ask the contractor to do removal and replacement, you know, like a certain, say, six-by-six area on a Saturday in front of that building, or else they're, you know, I mean, you can't remove and put down wet concrete and allow someone to be able to walk in, so. But it'll have to be some special accommodations, you know, made for that. Probably get most of those businesses. Yeah, yeah, that first, that first like six-by-six or five-by-five pack in front of the doorstep may have to be done on a Saturday or after hours, and give that concrete, you know, a good half-day cure time before you let people start walking on it.
Was there any hesitation about changing the looks of their concrete out front? Because I think that pebble goes all around.
It goes all the way around the corner.
All around the drive-through.
You know, I asked Shelby if she likes what they have right now, and she says they hate it. I need to dig in and see what that means exactly, because being married, I've realized that that can mean something very different than what I, when it comes to the design work, but that maybe kind of helps answer your question.
The concern you're probably getting at is that they have two different styles.
Right, yeah, because this is only going to go like on the Seventh Street side, not the Delaware Street side, or.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we are taking the removal up to the edge of the, you know, like along these, there's like these little segmental concrete, smooth concrete breaks in between the aggregate, and we are going all the way up to the edge of the farthest one left of the door.
So. They would just have that strip of. Yeah, let me ask her whether she would have hated it, see what her thoughts are. Because that might be something doable, we could match what they currently have, I don't know a lot about concrete, but.
Yeah, matching that aggregate would be really difficult, and I think the roughness of it really doesn't comply with ADA requirements.
That's a problem, okay, and it has to for.
I think this is a good direction, it's just what do we need to do to appease the east-west side, if anything? It may be, maybe ODOT will let us go a little bit further around the corner, you know, we're only talking about, you know, maybe 20, 30 square yards.
It goes all the way to the drive-through.
Well, yeah, and I don't think they'll let us go that far down the street, though.
Yeah, maybe it's up to the bank.
Now, up near Elm Street, on the corner there, because the traffic, well, one, because we do have angle parking there, and the crosswalk right now is all the way back at the face of the curb, you know, something that we do for visibility and to shorten up crossing and things, is to put what we call a bulbout, you know, on the corner, so that extends, you know, the sidewalk out to the edge of the travel line. It all provides a nice visual barrier for the vehicles that would be heading into town to make that right turn, you know, only, so. And coming down the road today, you know, as I've seen before, you know, isn't a sign for it, it's not striped, you know, right turn only, you know, somewhat like, you know, fur is when you take that right-hand turn on Seventh, so we'll add some of that, you know, into the project as well. And it gives you some green space, you know, so you get some nice, you know, little planters for other areas, so it kind of makes it look. Now we come up along the next block, so pretty basic, can see a couple of arrows that we tossed in there in the sidewalk, got an alley, so we'll have some ramps, you know, that come down for the alley, we'll take that piece of concrete out for the alley and put it in a little fair and stronger, you know, for the, because there's a lot more delivery trucks, trash trucks and things like that. And then we come up along the edge of the parking. Now, some of that asphalt parking, you know, there's like a, there's like probably a foot and a half, two feet, that's across the right-of-way line, but we're not going to, you know, remove it and have adverse impacts and change that, we'll stay about one foot away from it, get our sidewalk in there, swoop around a little fire hydrant that we have there, and then we get up into the intersection. At the intersection, because of the inlet is entirely along the radius, we've got a lot of work, a lot of intense work that will happen there. We have to pull out the old inlets that are there, set inlets beyond where our pedestrian ramps are going to be, then as we get to the, you know, as we come around the radius, we can bring it up a little bit higher. That high point helps keep the water flowing into the two inlets before they get to the pedestrian ramp, then we'll bring them into a pipe and connect to the existing pipe that goes into the roadway there. I was able to find an old 70s-era ODOT plan for the intersection, so I think the horizontal alignment and everything agrees really well with some of the storm drainage that we found out there, and I've investigated what we have for traffic signal box and conduits and things like that, so we'll add pedestrian push buttons, you know, for the crosswalks. I did talk to the state, we had to put a ramp in on the other side of the intersection as we have shown here, so that, well, we'll end up probably boring some conduit, you know, underneath the road, catch it in the junction box and bring it back to the pole. Then we have some more sidewalk, more on-street parking up there, we'll be behind the existing curb there, I don't believe, I don't believe we're going to replace that curb, we'll be matching, matching that curb. I am going to have to either move that ramp or add a little more sidewalk, so we've got an accessible route around the ramp. an accessible route around the ramp. So we have more, you know, parking, we're gonna bring some curbs and do some bulbouts on the edges there. Future ramps could be, could be put in there if necessary, we're not proposing to put them in there right now. That could change if you want us to add ramps to go to the other side of the street, you know, we can add that. One thing we do have to be cautious of too is maybe, you know, funding limitations, because this is, this is not gonna be let until January of '27, so we're, you know, like one year, four months from advertisement, so who knows what the cost of things will be then. I've got an alley again, I put, you know, some ramps up there at Holly Street, we could do something, you know, real similar to the other one. And then we're up near Ivanhoe, where it ends. Then we come up to a section along First Street, along the business frontage there, and, you know, I think, I think it's a Sonic that's down there, right, on the corner, our corner, is that a Sonic?
Yes.
Yeah, so since they have two driveways, it'll be easy to remove one, let everyone go in and out of the other one, we'll be able to, you know, flip-flop that access. And any questions? I do have some photographs, you know, from some things and some other renderings, I couldn't, been seeing anything, I just have to, you know, pull them up.
If you're worried about Sonic at all, they do have an exit out the back as well.
Oh, okay, that's great. I think the biggest thing, obviously, is, and, you know, my wife in Piedmont has a storefront, kind of like Monroe is just like your 7th, they got one entrance, you know, they got one to in and out, and to remove that sidewalk and put it in and still keep pedestrian access in there, you know, on Monday through Friday and Saturdays, it's a tough thing to do. If any of the businesses are closed on Mondays, you know, those are some, you know, sometimes some businesses are closed on Mondays, the bank obviously isn't, but, you know, maybe the I Care, I'm not too sure, but if they have certain days where they could either elect, elect to be closed, allows to get in, or we can, we can say if they're closed on a Saturday, but we'll work out those details as we, as we get through it, because I know how important, you know, accessibility is, you know, to your businesses.
Is that drawing especially in front of the I Care and the bank in that corridor, is that, would that be available in like a 3D so people can kind of see what you're talking about there?
Like a rendering of that?
Yeah.
A little more work, but I think, I think it would, some people learn as, are more visual than...
Right. I definitely work on making some renderings, you know, you know, as we go into it a little bit further, it'll just, you know, it'll take me a little bit of time, but, like, for instance, let's see, I'll find a rendering that I had here, and we see if you think... I have my footnotes on.
And then the other part in front of the Baptist Church parking, that the bulbout he's talking there, the alley and the next street, I don't know if it's gonna hinder the way their funeral processions go, if that would cause issues.
I don't know how they do their funeral processions now, so I'll ask them.
This is a rendering that I did just using Microsoft Word, or I might have did it in PowerPoint, didn't use any special rendering software, just from my own vanishing points and drawing things in, you know, I could create something similar to that, you know, along the street frontage, if that would, you know, suit your needs.
Yeah, I think, I think something more along the lines of that than the flat.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's not a problem. Anything else? Okay, well, it's been a pleasure, thank for this opportunity, and I'm sure I'll dig in at another later presentation.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
All right.
So item number 11, consider items pertaining to zoning, planning, and land use. Start with 11A. Receive recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission regarding the application for preliminary plat and final plat filed by Dustin Cleveland, representative of PHD Land Development LLC, for a distribution center to be instructed in the Perry Industrial Park, Route Number 7 and Number 10, south of John Wayne Boulevard. Take action on the preliminary and final plat. The Planning Commission did pass this on their end and send it over to us for approval Chris, do you want to just give them a quick update on the plat and what that means for those who are new?
Yeah, I think where we could start is, you know, we've owned this park for all the time, we never had a plat. Surbated, and, but we never knew how a lot would be sold. It ended up being sold exactly how we surveyed it, 10-acre tracts, 5-acre tracts, I mean, it ended up that way. But the truth is, is that Drive and Gloria G. Brown Boulevard, we own that property, we own the title to that property, and that's never been dedicated or reserved to the public. A plat does that, that's what a plat does. And of course, the company that's going to be there wants to know that it can plow out on that road, and that that's been dedicated, we of course plowed all the businesses there to use the road, but it's never been dedicated to the public. So what this preliminary and final plat does is they take the final two pieces of property that we own in the industrial park, and that is the one that we're selling to the applicant. And then that's Lot 1 and then Lot 2, and it plats it, and it formally plats it as Lot 1 and Lot 2, and it plats and reserves the public, or reserves the street that we own to the public. Now, you know, whenever you plats something, you know, you want to make sure that it's served by all utilities, and of course, if you remember, the property that Crow purchased, not the lot that we owned, but the L8 property, that was actually purchased by the company that built our road, we didn't charge them anything, and they built that road and built that base. Well, now, the applicant is promising by way of B to build Drive for us, by way of this development agreement. In addition, they're agreeing to pay for the transformer and to add certain costs to us pursuant to the electric service, that'll cover most if not all of our electric's needs to connect them into the infrastructure. They also have agreed to connect to our water into our sewer system, which is a little bit of off-site and a lot more onsite work pursuant to a second agreement with the county, and Nate said at the meeting that they've detected the county, they're agreeing to go up and to reconstruct John Wayne Boulevard at their sole cost. And so, you know, what we're doing for purposes of this preliminary plat and final plat is we're plating Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 1 that we're gonna sell to them, Lot 2, everyone remembers what we're gonna do with that, and with respect to the, with respect to the streets, at least, you know, the North-South Street, Duke Drive, N-Gloria, G-Brown Boulevard, those will be reserved to the, to the public. That's the action that you're taking by way of this, and the Planning Commission approved it and recommended it to you, they did make the recommendation subject to the approval of this First Amendment agreement, as you should too.
So counsel, just kind of a background, most businesses that we've been dealing with since I've arrived, we've had to give a lot to get them to come. This is an example of an organization that's being very generous and giving a lot to them. And as Perry becomes more and more desirable for economic development, these businesses, this is more in line with what you'll, you'll expect. When businesses come and they say, hey, in order to be there, we will give X, Y, and Z instead of us having to do that to them. So you'll see, you'll continue to see us give quite a bit in coming meetings, we have some other stuff in the pipeline where you'll see, but this is the standard I'd really like to get to, you know, this type of agreement.
Motion to approve the preliminary and final plats.
Contingent?
Preliminary and final, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, the subject to the First Amendment.
Subject to the First Amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the second, it's a roll call for 11A.
And copy. Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
O'Shea.
Yes.
And 11B, which is that First Amendment, consider approval of First Amendment to the purchase and sale contract with city development agreement with PHD Development Tell me a motion that we approve.
Yes, this amends the sale and purchase agreement, and this is the last piece that we need before closing.
Motion to approve the First Amendment. And copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
O'Shea.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes. All right, item 12, consider railroad grant options and give action. So this one's not, not ready to come before counsel, the consultants were supposed to send some options for us to review tonight, and they weren't able to get it done, so we'll look at it in a future meeting. Okay, so we'll forego item number 12 for now. Item 13, consider approval of application for payment number one with Lone Hickory Cattle Company on the 25th Street Water and Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $151,738.75. Let's just pay out number one.
Performt.
Yeah.
Performt.
Motion to payment number one with Lone Hickory Cattle Company.
Second. And copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
O'Shea.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes. All right, let's call our meeting board for the Perry Municipal Authority, have a roll call.
Copy.
Here.
Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Coldarn.
Here.
Rutt.
Williams.
Here.
O'Shea.
Here.
Warden.
Here. All right, we're quorum, item one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve. And copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
O'Shea.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes. All right, item 12, consider railroad grant options and give action. So this one's not, not ready to come before counsel, the consultants were supposed to send some options for us to review tonight, and they weren't able to get it done, so we'll look at it in a future meeting. Okay, so we'll forego item number 12 for now. Item 13, consider approval of application for payment number one with Lone Hickory Cattle Company on the 25th Street Water and Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $151,738.75. Let's just pay out number one.
Performt.
Yeah.
Performt.
Motion to payment number one with Lone Hickory Cattle Company.
Second. And copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Coldarn.
Here.
Rutt.
Williams.
Here.
Bloodso, I mean, Bloodso, I can't read, O'Shea.
Here.
I'm here. Here twice.
Secret twice.
We have two votes.
All right, item one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
O'Shea.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes. Adjourned.